Good morning, I'd like to call this January 11th Longmont City Council Meeting to Order. This is a continuation of the City Council's regular session meeting of July 8th. Could we please start with a roll call?
Mayor Coombs.
President.
Council members Bagley.
Here.
Christiansen.
Here.
Finley.
President.
Levison.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Santos.
Here.
Mayor, you have a call.
Okay, let's stand for a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, since this is a continuation meeting and we've already had first call public invited to be heard, you know, it's up to the council's decision whether to hold a public hearing on item 8A. I would support having a public hearing on item 8A for the people that are here to speak on it that have not already spoken. It might be a good idea to mention that if she signed up for public invited to be heard that we'll just cover that and you want to speak on this item that we'll just cover that during the public hearing item on item 8A. So I guess there's, since this is a continuation meeting, there's no agenda revisions, there isn't going to be a support from the city manager at this point. We've already had first call public invited to be heard at the old meeting, so we'll just get right to the ordinance on second reading.
And Mayor, that ordinance is ordinance O. 2014-36, a bill for an ordinance authorizing financing of certain expenses relating to the redevelopment of Twin Peaks Mall and in connection therewith authorizing the sale and subsequent leasing of certain city property, the execution and delivery by the city of a deed, a lease, purchase agreement, and other documents related to the financing, authorizing officials of the city to take all action necessary to carry out the transactions contemplated hereby and ratifying actions previously taken and providing other matters related thereto.
Okay, so like I said before, it's now up to the council to reopen, whether to reopen the public hearing on this item. So I would, I'll make a motion that we reopen the hearing for the people that have not spoken on the item 8A. Can I have a second? All right, let's vote on that. Okay, that passes seven to zero. So we will have a public hearing on this. So I guess we'll go ahead with the public hearing at this point, or do you think it makes more sense to present?
We can go forward with public hearing or we can go with staff presentation and then open up the public.
Why don't we do the staff presentation first and then do the public hearing following?
Jim Golden will be, and David Starnes, I think, again, will be making the presentations.
Mayor Coombs, members of council, I'm Jim Golden, Director of Finance. We'll give you a summary presentation and then we'll let council decide when they want us to try to answer any questions. So during the fall of 2012, staff held two study sessions to update the council and the community on the redevelopment of the Twin Peaks Mall and some preliminary concepts where for the redevelopment were discussed, including the urban renewal plan and the use of tax increment financing. In December of 2012, another study session provided information on the key elements of the redevelopment and reimbursement agreement, including a preliminary financial structure and guiding principles in that redevelopment. And in that study session, there was mentioned use of special revenue bonds, urban renewal authority bonds with a city moral obligation as a potential financing option. In late 2012, during the development of that redevelopment reimbursement agreement, the city's financial advisors advised the staff about the use of COPs, certificates of participation, as an alternative municipal financing tool. And during the study session on January 8th of 2013, staff presented to council options for consideration for the city or for Lura to provide financing for the $27.5 million in public financing as part of the RRA. One was a Lura bond issue and the other option was through the issuance of certificates of participation. Staff recommended that that option was to pursue financing through a certificate participation transaction. And the council did pass that recommendation in that direction. So in January of 13, the council entered into an agreement with Lura and the Twin Peaks Mall developer to do the redevelopment of Twin Peaks. Also included in that agreement was the Twin Peaks Metropolitan District. So under that agreement, the city was to provide or finance $27.5 million to reimburse the developer for eligible costs upon Lura approval of a development and financing plan submitted by the developer. That plan was finally approved last week, or last month, I should say, and it's approved subject to developer providing evidence of equity for the construction loan, which they need to provide on this Monday, July 14th. So certificates of participation involve the sale of four city properties, the Safety and Justice Center, the Civic Center, the library, and Development Services Center. Those will be sold to a trustee to be held as collateral on the financing. The COP issue is projected to total approximately $31.18 million and include $27.5 million for eligible cost reimbursements to the developer, a little over $1.1 million for Lura costs to date, an estimated $1.79 million for capitalized interest on the debt service payments that would be due in 2014 and 2015, which is before any surplus revenues expected to be generated from the project, and then $687,000 for issuance costs, metro district formation costs, and the underwriter's discount. The underwriter is Piper Jaffray. They were selected last year through a competitive process and they will purchase the COPs from the city in return for the COP proceeds to be used for the redevelopment project and associated costs. The underwriter then markets the COPs in individual denominations of $5,000 or greater, just as with a traditional municipal bond. The city will repay the financing over a period of 23 years through 2037 through base rental payments that are subject to annual appropriation by the city council. The annual payments on the COPs are projected at $1.38 million in 2016 and $2.34 million in 17 through 37. This is after the first two years of capitalized interest that I already referred to. So they are intended to be paid from a combination of the Twin Peaks Metro District property tax revenues, the Lura tax increment revenues from the redevelopment, and a portion of the 2% non-EAMRC sales tax generated from sales from the redevelopment. In a typical full year, the debt service is expected to be a little over $2.3 million, depending on obviously what the actual final interest rates and structure are, which will form next week. But just to give you an idea, the amount of dollars to come from the Twin Peaks Metro District property tax revenues would be in a full year in, once the property tax starts flowing in about three or four years, it would be about $450,000. The sales, the property tax increment dollars would be over $800,000. And so the remaining amount of the debt service, which could be anywhere from $1.1 to $1.2 million, would be from the sales tax increment portion. The project's projected to generate approximately $106 million in revenue over the 23-year lease period. That would be available to be pledged to the total debt service payment of $49.3 million, which is the $31.5 million of project cost plus interest. Other potential city revenue from property, from base property tax, base sales tax, and the non-EAMRC sales tax increment totals approximately $58.4 million over the same period of time. After final repayment of the COPs, title to the properties returns to the city. And actually, how that actually breaks out is we, all four properties will be phased back. So once we have repaid one of the properties or that much principal to represent one of the properties, it will come back to the city. So over the course of the 23 years, the titles return to the city over time.
Do we have a choice of which title to get back first?
Yes, we do.
With total control over that?
Yes, we do. And we're structuring that based on the buildings and also based on the potential for remodeling or changes to those buildings. But the one that's coming back first is Development Services Center. It's got a historical designation. It's also the oldest building and probably has a, I would say of the four, it's the least chance that we would continue to maybe use that building. We've leased it out in the past as a city, so looking at what could happen with that building, decided to put that one first. So COPs are a common method of municipal financing. They have been used to finance schools, water and sewer facilities, and other types of public facilities in communities throughout the front range and across the nation. Since this is subject to annual appropriation, you will be, this will be brought to you and is included in your annual budget process. It is, we actually do have, we don't have COPs, but we do have a lease purchase agreement in place for fire station number one that was adopted, I believe, sold in 2009 or so. And that is included annually in our budget process as an item that needs to be appropriated each year as under the lease agreement, and we do include that in our budget. As well as COPs, although they are not seen as the same, as a debt, as the same way as municipal bonds are, we do show them within our CAFR every year as our obligation underneath a footnote for lease obligations. So we do treat them very similar to debts in that respect. So with that, I'm giving you kind of the tip of the iceberg, and I think I'm available. David Starnes is here. Jim Monier from First Southwest is our financial advisor here, can help to answer on questions about the structure. And we also have Matt Gray from Butler Snow, who's here as representing our bond council, who can also help to answer questions.
Does anybody have any questions? Well, I guess I, or council member Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. Jim, what was the process that you went through to determine which buildings would be sold to support this effort?
Mayor Coombs, members of council, so the amount of the debt we knew was going to be in the neighborhood of $30 million. It's important that the buildings that we use are considered to be essential buildings, essential assets to the city, so that they are important, so that the purchasers of this, of the COPs can look to these and feel like these are important enough to the city that they will appropriate these dollars years after years, so they won't walk away from a building that they have no use, they would potentially walk away from a building they have no use for, but not from a building that is as important as the city hall, as the Safety and Justice Center. In addition, we looked at some of our newer facilities, since they have more asset value, but because of the fact that the recreation center and the museum are financed through a bond that is still not totally paid off for another five years, we couldn't look towards those assets. So the reality is that these, to accumulate $30 million of replacement value, it would have to be these buildings. We really don't have other buildings that we could substitute.
So it has to be buildings? It can't be a facility like a sewage treatment plant?
Well, yeah, we.
We don't need that.
Well, to answer that question, the sewage treatment plant has also got debt on it as well, but we've talked about different assets in different financings as well. We talked about this from the broadband perspective and whether or not we had assets to pledge in that go around as well. And really, we determined over the last year, this is, obviously, we discussed this a year and a half ago, and subsequent financing since then, and we realized we really only had these essential buildings that we would be able to pledge that we probably would be of the most interest.
Okay, I have one other question, and that's this redevelopment and reimbursement agreement, we are basically, we are effectively obligated to finance $27.5 million regardless of the method, is that correct? We can't get out of it.
The attorney.
I heard Jim and I think accurately referred to it as a moral obligation. I'll distinguish that from a legal obligation. If you're willing to walk away from the buildings, each year, council has the discretion to decide how to spend city dollars, and you could decide not to spend those dollars in paying those lease payments.
But the RRA is totally binding, there's no way to do another financing method other than what's in this redevelopment and reimbursement agreement?
We'll defer to Jim, but I believe that's correct.
Mayor Coombs, members of council, I think, well, this late date in time and with this RRA that has got some dates tied to it, I think you probably do not have other options at this point without that RRA probably expiring. But the RRA did give us the flexibility to use whatever approach we wanted to, to raise the $27.5 million. URA bonds were an option as well. The moral obligation would have come into play if we allowed the metro district to issue the debt. It would have required a moral obligation from the city to support that, those bonds, which is one of the reasons we didn't want to go in that direction. We wanted to do the COPs so that we would have control.
Thank you.
You know, it seems to me when we had our study session, we discussed all these different parameters, and the COP basically had the lowest interest rate. We didn't need the $2 million in reserve. And, you know, we discussed all this back in, you know, January of 2013, and we also said at that point that COPs was the method that we chose and voted on. And that was all public knowledge at that point. Council member Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Welcome back.
Thank you.
I appreciate you seeing that chair. The, I guess, I think I understand, but over the last couple days, this has become a hot topic. You know, emails blowing up, phone calls coming in from people I respect and admire a great deal, from both sides of the aisle, so to speak. But I just want, so I'm asking a question. I think I understand the answers, but I think it would be good to get it out there. And it's a lot of the things that, the same questions I asked before and why I supported the COP option. And so the, my understanding is that the COP option that you explained is basically just a way of assuring people who are going to lend us money that we will pay them back. Is that correct?
Mayor Coombs, members of council, it is, by, the structure that I explain does give them some assurance that this council will likely appropriate from year to year.
Right. So, I mean, so you referred, you even used the word, you know, we're selling our buildings, and the paper said, you know, the city is voting to sell their buildings. But my understanding is that it's a mechanism. We're not selling in the selling sense, capital S. It's like if I go out and get a commercial building, the bank holds that commercial building as collateral, but we're going to go one step further and put them into a trust so that it's kind of separate and apart, and they're saying, if we don't make the payments, you know, that, the items in this trust all bundled together, that is the collateral, correct?
I'm going to ask Matt Gray to come up, because I think the lawyer could probably state this correctly. But we are, we're transferring title to the buildings.
To the trust.
To the, to the trust, to who.
Correct, yep.
Now, the only other thing I want to point out is, we originally looked at this, doing this as a lease-leaseback transaction, which would not transfer title to the buildings. The problem with that is that under the city charter, we could only do a lease for 20 years. And that would have limited this to a 20-year deal, which would have increased our debt service instead of being over 23 and a half years. And so we switched this to a sale-leaseback transaction, which is very similar otherwise, but in order to give us the ability to do 23 and a half years, but now.
Which reduces, which is a cash flow issue, which reduces the amount of annual payments we have to make.
That is correct.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I am Matt Gray from Butler Snow, who the city has retained as bond council in this transaction. Mayor, your description is basically correct as what's going on. It's important to note that one of the documents that you'll be authorizing today is a deed, a special warranty deed. You're deeding, it'll actually wind up being four deeds, but deeding these four pieces of property to UMB Bank. But UMB Bank makes it clear, we're only taking title of this property in our role as the trustee for this transaction. So the title owner, there's a title insurance policy, there's a lot of things you would see in a building conveyance, but UMB Bank will hold title only its capacity as a trustee. The flip side of that is that you contractually, through the lease purchase agreement that would be authorized and the indenture of trust that would be authorized, you would have the contractual right to regain title to those buildings if you take the proper steps under the financing. So if you. Exactly. So if you decide to pay off the COPs early, there are ways set forth to do that. And under the trust, the trustee is required to convey it back to you as long as you meet those requirements under the financing document. So ultimate control of these buildings remains with the city. If you ask the, you know, IRS, for example, who remains the owners of the building, they would say you, because you ultimately control the destiny of these buildings, not somebody else. But what you're saying is, we're willing to transfer title such that in order to take title back, you would have to comply with the terms of this financing and either pay off the COPs all the way to their maturity or pay them off early. And if you pay them off early, then again, we're also going to, and authorized in the indenture in front of you, are also what we call escrow deeds, which are deeds from the trustee giving you your property back, and we're going to have those signed right away. The trustee's going to have those sitting in a file, waiting to give them back to you just as soon as you comply with all the necessary requirements of a financing document.
So here's the big question. This is what caused me to actually say, okay, I'll get behind the COP, you know, in addition to the lower interest rate, not having to put up the $2 million, et cetera. But let's suppose that we did other financing options. And let's just suppose for a second it was the exact same interest rate, exact same terms, and we were able to go out there and find a lender that said, you know what, we're going to spot you the money, no collateral whatsoever, you know? And let's suppose we don't pay. You know, sometime in the future, city council says, you know what, we've decided this year we're just not going to pay. We still have to pay, right?
Correct.
So at the end of the day, even if they're not holding it as collateral, the bank would still sue us and get those buildings, right? Or not the buildings, but.
Right.
We would have to come up with a way by selling property, increasing taxes, some way to pay off this debt, this obligation that we're undertaking, correct?
That's correct. In a typical municipal bond issue, and there are a few different ways you could use here, but let's take a general obligation bond, the simplest kind. General obligation bond, you would enter into a true debt of the city with your obligation to pay. You'd be pledging the full faith and credit of the city. That wouldn't require any buildings to be deeded anywhere, there are no buildings involved in it. But you're also taking it on as a pure debt. You don't have the option to pay or not to pay in any given year. If you don't pay, then there would be a lawsuit against you, and you would get an opinion from a law firm like ours that says, yes, this is an obligation of yours. This isn't, this isn't a maybe, this isn't a we'll decide down the road. This is that you're obligated to pay under the terms of those documents. And the COP transaction isn't that way. In any given year, you can decide, you know what, we don't want to pay anymore. We don't like this transaction, we don't want to pay. The consequence of that would be you don't get title to your buildings back. You only, you never have to pay more than you appropriate in any given year in your appropriation process. And so there's a, that's the security trade-off that you'll see in various different transactions. Here there is, there are buildings that aren't, you know, technically legally collateral, but it's, there's a practical collateral to it. And that's, that's what you give up in exchange for the ability to walk away from this deal in any year that you want to.
So by doing this, it's not a question of whether or not we lose city property or lose city funds, because we still have to pay the debt. But by doing this, we're getting a cheaper interest rate, better terms, and it sounds like a cheaper annual payment.
Well, and the big piece is you don't have the debt reserve requirements coming in that Jim mentioned in the conversation. So that would be in the neighborhood of an additional $2 million that you would have to put into upfront on the issuance, it'd be included in that number. And that was one of the major differences when you look at the Lura financing model, was that requirement. So that, I mean, you start seeing the cost immediately adding into the debt issuance.
Okay, all right. So that's, since we've talked about COPs.
So one more piece that he touched on that I think we need to clarify is there's a 10-year callback provision in the debt. And so what that 10-year provision means is that you can't pay it earlier than the 10 years, but when you hit 10 years, you can pay it. And so something that Jim and I have discussed is that as we evaluate this on an annual basis, and we have the projections about the additional revenue coming in that we've shown council on a number of occasions and presentations, each year during the budget process, we can evaluate what those returns are, and we could set up an internal debt reserve fund that starts accumulating over time so that you can take advantage of the callback provision in 10 years, and you can do early payouts and look at it that way. So that is another mechanism embedded in what he was talking about. I just wanted to provide some clarity on that.
Council member Christiansen.
We're talking about four buildings that have been acquired as assets to the city for decades of Longmont citizens paying into those, and we're now leveraging those. And what you're saying is, in the next 23 years, we have no more assets that we can use to leverage. This seems like a very, very risky idea. And we haven't paid off the fire station one yet. That was only for $2 million. So what happens in the next 23 years if there's another catastrophic meltdown of the financial industry like we've had? What is the risk to the city of losing these buildings, actually? Or having to cut into pension funds or, you know, I'm thinking Detroit.
Mayor Coombs, members of council. So I think when I say that we have no more buildings to leverage, I mean at this dollar value or level.
Yes, I understand.
And so the, you know, within five years, that fire station pays off. All of our fire stations are then available at that point. We leveraged two fire stations to do that one. So we will have buildings, we have buildings, but will we actually be taking this type approach again in the future, in the, over the next 15 years or something? I don't know. It depends on what we're approaching, but we've been doing a lot of debt financing in the last two to three years, and you have not, this is the only time that we've taken this approach. This is a unique development. This project is different. I should, let me put it that way, compared to the type of assets we've been financing, that we've been able to do financings through the revenue streams that we have from our fees, our utility rates and things like that. We are able to leverage our sales tax, which is a major, major source of revenue for the city, with over $45 to $50 million of revenue that comes in that we can leverage and have leveraged in the past, and I'm sure will leverage again in the near future for purposes such as public buildings and open space and things like that. So I'm not trying to leave you with the impression that we're not going to have any further flexibility. COPs, we may not have that flexibility in a very near. in the very near future. But as things are paid off, it probably does present itself again. If the, you know, if there's a downturn, if there's another economic downturn, and there will be, you know, probably over the course of this 23 and 1/2 years, I could probably bet that there's going to be, yeah, more than one. So, and at that point in time, is this going to impact the city's pensions? Believe me, I, look at all the gray hair around here on the city staff. We're not going to let that happen, right? So we're relying on that too. No, this is not, this is, this is small, this is $2.3 million payment. We have sources to be able to make $2.3 million payments. They look, remember, I told you just three days ago about the city's bond rating. And we got a double A, double A plus bond rating. And this obligation has a double A rating. And it's because the rating agency took a look at the city and what assets we're putting up, not just four buildings, but to look at the city's general fund and the public improvement fund, the general revenue sources that would be used if for some reason the revenues that we're relying on don't come through. And they gave us a double A, double A rating for that purpose. So I feel very confident that we're in a good position today and going ahead into the future to be able to take on those type of debts when it comes, when the need arises.
But we've been using, we've used, the fire buildings were used to purchase other public buildings. This is used for private development. That's the difference here. We're setting a precedent of leveraging city buildings, public money, for a lot of public money for private development. That's a very strange precedent to set, as far as I'm concerned. But, so what, you don't see that there's any risk in losing these buildings over the next 23 years?
So Mayor Coombs, members of council, no, I do not see risk in us losing the buildings. That's, you know, that, this is, is there a risk in this deal? I'm not going to tell you there's not risk in this deal. But I do think that, as I've just stated, I think $2.3 million a year that the city would be able to find a way to make the payments.
But then why didn't we decide on another mechanism? Why didn't we decide to leverage what we had similar to that? Why did we decide to use the buildings?
Because it would be $2.7 million a year. It would be a greater amount of dollars that we would be on the hook for if we used a different financing approach. We're still be relying on the same source of revenues to make the payment. The alternative was to have the urban renewal authority issue the bonds. But you're still going to find yourself in a position that if you can't make the payment because the revenues don't come through, City of Longmont still has to do something to make sure that happens to keep its good name with the investment community.
So I think adding to what Jim said is those other options were looked at and discussed in a number of settings here. It is correct. And I think the point is on the difference between the cost of the debt on $2.3 and $2.6. The larger the debt payment becomes, the more risk you inherently start incurring in the process. And so the other piece of this is the amount of dollars that flow into the general fund for other issues that we have to deal with. And so as you look back to the projections that David presented, I believe he presented that in the first reading or a couple of weeks ago, when we talked about the financing plan. If you look at that, there were some projections, I believe it was in the neighborhood of $1.2 million moving into the general fund. And so the total of the revenue, $58.4 million, those are dollars that, once you make the debt service payment that we projected flowing into the general fund for us to utilize for other activities that we have in place. So if you add to the capacity of the bond payment, that reduces the amount of money that could flow into the general fund. And that was part of the overall discussion in terms of choosing this method of financing last year.
Councilmember Levinson.
Thank you. I have one specific question on the pledge resolution that I read again this morning for the third time and picked up on it. I just want to get that addressed. On page, I can't see what page number it is. It's the first page of the resolution. The bottom of the page, line 23, says a debt service mill levy in the amount of 25 mils on the taxable property of the district. There has been an example of an urban renewal area that a taxing entity went out of business and then the building was taken over by a nonprofit. And then they wouldn't be eligible to pay property taxes. So if this case occurs, what do we have for backup in the pledge resolution to ensure that we do have the revenue coming in?
Are you talking about Resolution 2461?
Yes.
We're not on that.
I don't know if we're going to do. I thought it was just a general discussion.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Levinson. It is true that one, well, let's get the whole conversation right. With respect to certificates of participation, none, no actual revenues are pledged to the payment of the certificates of participation. The city decides what money it's going to use. It can use any monies that are available for any other purpose. From a practical perspective, you heard Mr. Golden describe what revenues the city is planning on using. Obviously, that's an important part of the practical conversations that you had. It is true, from a property tax perspective, that certain property owners don't have to pay property taxes. Governments, certain nonprofits, don't have to pay those types of taxes. So it is true that within this area, if suddenly this wasn't going to be a mall, it was going to become, you know, a giant library, there could be some significant problems with property tax revenues. I don't think that's what's anticipated. But that is something that you should know going forward. It's a risk anytime an entity based on property taxes comes along. Anytime something goes from being a commercial property, or say you take an old commercial property, you turn it into a multifamily housing facility, well, it can go from being commercial property to residential property and that can make a very big difference in your property tax revenues too. So I think, again, I'm not the one to answer business questions. But from a legal perspective, yes. Say if all of a sudden, a significant amount of this property that you're intending to use property taxes off of switched from being a commercial property to something else, that could decrease the revenues that you're facing. I think the question you have to ask yourself is whether that's a realistic possibility and I would defer to others in answering that question.
Right, well, I know we have a local example. And I'm just going to ask a couple of questions that I know I addressed with Jim through email, but I want to get out there publicly. I asked whether or not a property owner within the district currently could exit the district to try to avoid payment. Can you address the answer to that question?
Sure. The property within a metropolitan district, once, and again, I'll go through the whole sort of technical aspect of what we're talking about as well. And part of this does go into the pledge agreement. I don't know, Mr. Mayor, would you like me to, are you comfortable with us continuing the discussion?
Sure, go ahead.
The pledge agreement that is going to be executed by the metropolitan district in connection with this whole transaction is not subject to annual appropriation the same way your obligation is under the certificates of participation in the lease purchase agreement. They're entering into a binding, voted debt authorization. So what, the pledge of money they make of their property taxes to you in order for, in exchange for you entering into this transaction for the property, is something that they do have to do year after year. It's a pledge of their property taxes and it's a pledge of the specific ownership taxes received by the district. Under law, when a piece of property is to be excluded from a metropolitan district or from any type of special district, what's required is, even if you do remove property from a district, that property remains liable for any indebtedness of the district that existed at the time that it leaves. So while the authority of the metropolitan district board, and there's several steps that takes to remove property anyway. But say somebody did remove property successfully from the metropolitan district, it would still be liable for any indebtedness that existed at the time that it exited. Which means anytime somebody moves after the date, the pledge agreement is signed and executed and delivered, they would still be required to pay the taxes for their share of this indebtedness. And then once it was paid off, then they wouldn't have to worry about it anymore. But that obligation would continue on that property under law.
Great. And I, that, thank you for answering that question, you know, both publicly and also through the email. I would like to address a couple of specific things, which I think are at the heart of the COP situation. And I had a time to do a little bit of research on the internet yesterday and found that going back more than a decade ago in two different counties in California, in Santa Barbara County and Placer County, there was actually a grand jury convened, which sounds unusual to all of us. But they were talking about this because of the fact that a lot of COP debt was going through to finance things. And voters and taxpayers really believed that they did not have enough clarity and transparency around these issues. So a couple of the findings, I think, are significant here, which I would like the council to consider. Out of Placer County, the grand jury and Judge Garbelino suggested that entities issuing COP do an annual report. And I actually found the report from 2014 and passed the first two pages to Jim Golden that would outline the original amount of the issuance, a brief description of the project, the trustee's name, balance remaining, interest cost incurred to date, estimated future interest cost. And after what City Manager Dominguez talked about this morning, if we have an intention to pay things off earlier, I think that having a report annually that is disseminated very widely, maybe we put a little, you know, email address in a slip of paper in the utility where once a year saying, please look at the COP report, then we would have greater transparency. Plus, if it is our intention to pay it off, then the public has full disclosure that we are leveraging additional money beyond the increment coming out of the mall, sales tax revenue that we're going to devote. And it'll also give an indication of how close we are to paying off the first building, which I think is what I'm hearing a lot from residents. So we will vote on this, but I would like, I'm going to be making a motion to get some more clarity. The other thing that was very significant in both these counties is that the public really felt that they did not get full disclosure. And I think it's really evident when we have a council member who, you know, the year, I understand that the vote happened almost a full year before they were in office. But really, the full disclosure to the public of the need for the project, using clearly understandable language and working with the media to provide maximum coverage. I think we may not have done our best job here. And I think we could do a better job in the future, but I think we can stand up and do our best now to get some additional transparency and communication to everyone. And I also agree that, you know, we have looked fully at all the different pros and cons of the different financing techniques. And when it gets down to bottom line, if your interest rate goes up, it's just more money the public entity has to pay. And in some ways, the efficiency of the COP process where your costs are lower for issuance as opposed to a bond, some of the other costs are significantly less, I think is really a pro in this case. The con is that we didn't do the best job communicating which buildings and being clear about that. And I apologize to people that we were not doing our best job with that. But I think we can mitigate that in the future. And also, the annual report will let people know where we are with the payoff.
Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I respect and actually love my full council members. I think everybody here does a great job. And so my comments in no way are to be argumentative or judgmental or whatever. But I just want to cast some light on some stuff. And that is, I first learned about the mall idea the same day I heard for the very first time the word fracking. I literally had lunch with Alan Ginsborg at noon. And then I went with Brian Hanson to visit residents out at Union Reservoir to hear about this thing called fracking. So just to give you an idea of how long, I mean, we're talking about transparency and process, you know? And I know that there are a lot of emails and emotion that have been generated over the last couple of days. But this mall, this process, this idea, what we're doing today, this conversation has been ongoing, at least for me, literally exactly the same length of time as I've been dealing with the fracking issue. And so, I mean, we've had, you know, hundreds of conversations, dozens of meetings, debates, conversations. And so this is not something that all of a sudden, like we're trying to boondoggle the public or not being transparent. I understand the need to just make sure we could have done a better job. We're sorry. I'm with you on that one, you know? Because it is what it is. And if people are just hearing about it for the first time, you know, yeah, I guess we could have done something better. Honestly, I don't know what. Because we've had all these meetings, you know? First and second readings and executive sessions. And we've met with, I've had dozens and dozens of meetings with constituents in my office here at City Hall. I mean, this has been an ongoing discussion for years. And so, and the big, and I think really today, I look at this coming down to two issues. One is, how are we financing it? Which, again, the decision was made a while ago, the COP. But, and really, my comments and questions would reiterate that we've done our homework and hopefully, in hearing the discussion, it will put some fears to ease. But then the other issue is, is this something we should be doing? Okay? Is this something we should be doing? And again, this is a conversation that we've had over the last two and a half, three years almost. And not for newer members of council, but it's been ongoing for a while. And so, yeah, there is risk. But the city staff and city council, we've put things in place to mitigate that risk. And so this is in the form of a question. And the question is, what have we done to mitigate that risk? And so, first of all, could you, specifically what I'd like you to reiterate, and I see that a representative from Newmark Merrill's here, is number one is I would like to know how much revenue the current mall is producing in sales taxes, which my understanding is not much. Two, if we're putting in $27 million plus fees, again, what was the number that we expect back? So what kind of investment is it? Three, what was the criteria that we put on Newmark Merrill before they get any of our money? What have they got to do? Meaning, my understanding is they had to reach 70% lease rate. They had to, you know, demolish the mall. So I'd like to, I'd like to get that out in the open So I'd like to, I'd like to get that out in the open so that people know that what have we done to mitigate the risk of, and the possibility of this actually turning into a giant library? And then, and I guess the, I guess I feel compelled to say that I don't mean to offend Alan Ginsburg and his buddies at Newmark Merrill, but I've never looked at this project as getting a new mall. I've looked at this project as getting rid of a very big building that's doing nothing for the city. And then, and then people assume it's being built into a mall, but it's really not a mall. It's just a retail area that is not ugly and empty and that will get tax revenues from. And even the eminent domain action, again, Mr. Ginsburg, I'm sorry, it wasn't about stealing the mall from Dillard's, it was convincing Newmark Merrill to pay a fair market price for the mall. You know, and so this is a project that we're getting rid of a bunch of empty space that nobody wants and replacing it with retail space that will bring enjoyment, entertainment, opportunity, and tax revenue to the city. So before we embark down this road, again, the question is, what have we done to make sure our butts are covered so that we don't have a giant library or another empty mall and we're on the hook for 27.5 million dollars in debt and at risk of losing our four buildings?
Well, I was going to suggest that David Starnes come up and address that because he did a very good job with particularly one slide last week, which I thought was pretty conservative, you know, with the conservative sales tax growth. So if you could maybe just reiterate some of the stuff you've already presented.
Sure. Good morning, Mayor, Members of Council, David Starnes, redevelopment manager for the city. I'll touch on a couple of things. I'll probably have Jim chime in on some of the numbers, and Alan Ginsburg is here as well, as to address some of the particulars related to the tenants and so forth. I guess the main thing, Mayor Potem Bagley, is the redevelopment agreement is the framework by which we mitigate the risk in terms of ensuring that what we're participating is, is what we're getting in terms of uses and tax revenue. And probably the most important thing is the development and financing plan. As part of this negotiation with the developer, we wanted to ensure that what this developer builds and brings, one, is what the community's been asking for. You know, the community's been asking for a new theater for the longest time. This ensures that, brand-new 50,000-square-foot multiplex theater. Other things that the community's been talking about is higher-end retailers, restaurants, entertainment uses. We wanted to also ensure that the developer is not going to be, so to speak, cherry-picking other retailers within the city. So 80% of the retail square foot that comes to the city through this development has to be new to Longmont. We wanted to really help attract uses that will be complementary to our city and frankly have people shop, eat, and entertain themselves within the city without having to go outside. And this redevelopment agreement explicitly kind of outlines those requirements and those needs before we would proceed with the financing aspect of that. And the development financing plan that we presented back on June 24th, that will be going, you know, subject to approval once we receive evidence of equity by Monday, has met those satisfaction, you know, conditions. In terms of what the mall is generating now in tax revenue, maybe Jim, if he has that number?
So for the year 2014, after five months, the mall that would be inside the building and also all that's on the ring road around it, is generating $200,000 of sales and use tax for the year, for five months.
The base, the base on that was 400,000. It's been in the calendar.
It was actually, no, it's 750 or so. This is 2%.
Okay. So, on the 2%, so there's another piece of that that we look at in terms of the increment as well that comes into play. So you can see from when the base was established to now that the revenue has, well, I mean, historically, the revenue's dropped.
I, those are not apples and apples. That's 700,000 and 400,000, those are an annual number.
So for five months, the mall's generated 200,000 for this year. You know, at its peak, it was generating 2.5 million or more for the whole year.
And to kind of reiterate what Jim mentioned earlier this morning in terms of what this project has the potential to generate, based on projections, working on estimates of sales per square foot, talking with, you know, national retail tenants of what they're doing comparably and what could happen here. As I mentioned, it's a total of about 116 million over the 23-year period. And this includes the sales tax piece, which is approximately 59 million for the 2% non-urban mark, that will be available to service the debt, a portion of that. But the city also receives that base sales tax, the full 3.275%. And over the 23-year period, that totals about 37.9 million that would flow directly to the city general fund. I also wanted to point out too, in terms of, you know, one of the main reasons why this project and why we're doing this is for the elimination of blight. You know, back in 2009, the city adopted the Urban Road Plan for this area, which includes the mall and the area to the east, as a blighted area. And one of the things under the Colorado Urban Road State Statute is the use of TIF to facilitate reinvestment and redevelopment of property to humiliate blight and provide opportunities for investment and revenue generation that would help support what the community's looking for in terms of retail sales and greater investment in property. And this developer has come forth with a proposal to do such that, which would really remove the blighting conditions that the mall currently comprises and provide an opportunity for uses that are complementary to our city. Mayor Potem, did I answer all your questions?
I think you had them all. I guess the other question I had was, what is the, the risk is all, we said 80% has to be non-cannibalization, so to speak. My question is, did we require that they basically have long-term leases in place before we give them the 27.5 million? Before the city spends a dime towards this project, which is not necessarily, we're not giving it to a private entity, it's a public-private partnership, meaning that we're not giving them money because we think Alan Ginsburg and Newmark Merrill's cool, we're going to get our money back and then some. There's something in it for us. So my question is, what are the percentage, what did we require that he, what are the current lease rates, or what percentage is already leased out? You understand what I'm trying to ask here. You know, what did we make him do and did he need it? And what's going in? And when does he get his money?
I'll probably have Mr. Ginsburg come up and speak specifically to like the leases. I know as part of our agreement, we reviewed some of the lease documents, and they are long-term leases, and these are the things that we were looking at to ensure kind of what Mr. Golden was speaking about, if a tenant were to leave, what's going to happen? I mean, some of the, what we call the big three, Sam's Club, the theater, and Whole Foods, I mean, these are retail tenants that don't go into communities lightly and do short-term leases. So I'll probably have Mr. Ginsburg kind of speak to some of the more details about where he's at in terms of some of these other leasing activities with these other retailers, and specifically with these three to the extent that he is possible.
So, to be more specific, in Appendix D of the redevelopment agreement that was voted on by the council in January of 2013, that's where we really laid out the specifics that the council evaluated in the financing plan. And so, one of the first things, the developer shall have obtained executed lease or sale agreements with the following tenants, large-format general retailer, stadium-style film theater with a minimum of 12 screens. And then we said the developer shall have obtained one of the following, an executed lease or sale agreement with the grocery store that is commonly classified as a natural grocer within the grocery industry, a letter of intent, and then there were other parameters that went in if it was a letter of intent. We were very focused on this. And the reason why, this is going to provide the bulk of the revenue that secures the debt. When you look at the property tax increment that's coming in play and you look at the projected revenues associated with these facilities, this fundamentally is a big part of the revenue stream coming in. And so, those have all, that was part of the approval of the financing plan that came through. In addition, there are a number of requirements in terms of then just how the dollars are distributed. And so, one, for example, is that you can only get 500,000 during the demolition phase. You can't start getting reimbursements until commencement of construction begins, and there's a definition for commencement of construction that's embedded in that agreement. So the redevelopment agreement is really everything that's bringing it together. The redevelopment agreement also has a section in there on the metro district that says you can't dissolve the metro district as long as there's debt that's outstanding in this. And so all of those parameters were put in play in the redevelopment agreement to provide that security that you were just asking about. In addition, if you look at the financial assumptions in there, we were very conservative on the growth estimates in terms of David's numbers. I believe it was 1%, David?
Mm-hmm.
A 1% growth rate, which, when you take that out over time, that's a really conservative number to use in terms of those estimates.
And those label assessments, they were based on what we know today, I mean, for the July 8th, or the June, the last meeting in June, you presented the slide, and that was based on the best knowledge we had of the coming stores and leases at that point. And my recollection is that showed that it was still a very good win-win situation for both the developer and the city.
Yes, you know, the June 24th presentation where I presented this one pager included the most recent projections in terms of property values, which gets to the property tax piece, as well as the sales tax, sales per square foot by each of the tenant types for each of the parcels. And to kind of give you the context as well, it maybe wasn't clear in terms of when you look at the sources of revenue being used to pledge to the debt service, the metro districts, if you consider over the 23-year period, of the 49 million in annual payment, when you consider the 31 million project cost plus the interest, it's about a total payment of 49 million, 30% of that amount is coming from the metro district. 55% approximately is coming from the TIF from the other taxing entities, and the city's piece is about 15%. Of that, 10% is through the city property tax increment generated and about 5% from the sales tax. So to kind of give you a breakdown of how the payment, the sources of payments to service the debt on this thing, that's kind of how it's broken down over the 23-year period.
Okay.
Other questions?
Did that answer your question sufficiently?
Spot on.
Okay. I did have just one quick question for Mr. Ginsburg. You know, the, when I was watching the public hearing, one thing came up about how malls failed because shopping has changed, that people buy more Internet stuff, make more Internet purchases. So obviously, you know, you as a pretty smart businessman, you would have taken that into consideration, and you wouldn't basically follow the same mistakes that malls that went out of business did. Can you address how you're trying to make your mall a little bit more Internet-proof?
Absolutely. You know, first, I want to thank you all for this journey we've been on for, you know, three years now. There's been a great deal of thought and effort put into this by literally, I think, hundreds of people now, as well as a number of community meetings we held at the project that were voluntary meetings where we had several hundred people from the community attend those meetings to discuss our planning and our efforts there. So this is the culmination of a tremendous amount of effort, and it would be very hard for any one person in this room, myself included, to understand all of that effort and all of the vetting that effort has resulted in among the hundreds of people who have been involved with it, whether they be lawyers that work for the city, the city's staff, engineers that work for us, architects who work for us, my efforts, our lenders' efforts, our partners' efforts. A great deal of vetting has gone into this. So there is no casual endeavor here. We take personally, I take, the obligation the city has undertaken to support this project very personally and very, very seriously. It keeps me awake at night to know that we're going to produce the result that makes this successful for this community and for my company. So it's a very, very serious commitment, and I'm so committed, I'm going to move my office here from Fort Collins to be sure we can watch and handle what's going on here under my thumb, under my watch, and I've been doing this for 32 years. So I want you to know, there's a very deep personal commitment, there's also an $18 million financial commitment to date on this project that we have invested, and we are guaranteeing a $45 million construction loan. So we take this very, very seriously, just to be sure everybody understands that. And so, now the question about the Internet, it's a great question, it's something we study very carefully. I have watched this industry evolve. Over the last decades, we own close to 10 million square feet of retail space in three different states, so this is something we're very familiar with, we watch. And we shared with some of you, well, with the entire council, a study that the Urban Land Institute, which is the predominant research arm of the commercial real estate industry worldwide, produced year before last on trends among Generation Y shoppers. Generation Y shoppers are the generation coming up after my generation, the baby boom. And so those are, that's the future of retailing. And in fact, it's a bigger population boom, it's about over 80 million people that are in Generation Y. And so what I spend my time doing is unfortunately not trying to create something that I'm going to shop at for the rest of my life, but what is the shopper who's coming into their prime going to do the rest of their life? And the Internet is clearly a big part of that. And so the direction retail is heading now, and shopping centers in general, is that they need to serve a much greater purpose than goods and services. They need to be a gathering place, and they need to be an experience. Consumers are attracted to, and particularly Generation Y, projects and places that they can have an experience, where they can interact with people, where they can put on their sunglasses and work on one of these, and not be seen by anybody but be in the mix. Where they can get food, where they can learn, where they can go to a yoga class, where they can have a fitness or an outdoor experience, or an indoor experience in a movie theater. We've seen the fear that came out first when the Internet was going to, when videos came out, you know, the movie industry's going to go on its tail. Now the Internet come out, on-demand. You know, I wish I was in Longmont because my on-demand download of a movie might work far better than it does with Comcast up in Fort Collins, where it stops about every, you know, three and a half, four minutes and then picks back up. The reality is, the consumer still wants to be entertained, they still want to go to a health club, see other people work out, go to a fitness class, they still want to go to a place like Whole Foods, which offers a much greater experience than purely shopping. And so we focused on how do we create a durable, long-lasting mix of retail that drives sales but also meets the changing habits? And you're not going to go to a gym, you're not going to have a Whole Foods experience, and you're not going to go to a movie theater on the Internet. So I'm very, very confident that this mix, and then the village that we're building that's so unique, and is going to be a standout within this whole region, combined, will give that consumer something that's long-term, a place they want to go. We've also developed a very heavy partnership, Deep Roots, with this school district now, and we're integrating this project into your community so that it really is the place people want to hang out. And I'm very committed to that. So I guess that's how I react to the Internet is, you know, retailing has changed, it's become much more about experience, and this project is about creating a good experience for your community.
Okay, well, thank you. Did an excellent job answering that question.
Thank you.
I guess now, unless there's other questions, I'm going to open this up for the public hearing. Before I open up the public hearing, I would like to say on the record that I have watched the public hearing from this that occurred on Tuesday night. So we'll just continue the public hearing, and so since Joan has already spoken, we'll go to Bob Peck, then will be the next person, would you like to come and speak? And he'll be followed by Eve Bruce. Please come and state your name and address for the record.
Good morning. My name is Bob Peck. I live in 1935 Spruce Avenue in Longmont. After listening to the discussion, I'm going to throw my notes away. Some random thoughts. If this is such a good deal, why weren't there private investors? Why is the city of Longmont on the hook for that? And Councilperson Edinson mentioned that you could have done a better job in telling the public about this. I think you're being too generous with yourself. One of the questions I would have, if you've had hundreds of meetings, all this work going on, no one I associate with knew anything about selling public buildings. And I'll just speak for myself, and my guess is, very few people know what a cop is. When you, when I see certificate of participation, that reminds me that I was a youth baseball coach, and that's what I gave to the team members. That's my frame of reference, and I'm not trying to be flip. People don't know what that is. You use the word "selling" city assets, the finance director uses that term, the Longmont Times Call uses that term. We're not really selling it. So that's why people are confused. You read, you listen to people, and we're selling city assets. City assets, I worked for a municipality very close to here for 30-some years. Anytime assets disposal was mentioned, it was for the public interest, and the public building, infrastructure, those sort of things. Not in, I don't even know whether to call it a mall. It sounds to me like we're going to get a really expensive youth center here. I think for 30-some million bucks, you could have built a really nice one. But that's why people are confused, and if you've had all these meetings, your message is not getting out there. And maybe that's because people like me aren't paying really close attention, although I kind of do. I didn't know anything about assets being sold until fairly late Tuesday night. And when I was told of this, I thought, oh, it can't be right, the city's not going to sell this, this stuff. If you had to leverage city property to mitigate floods, build fire stations, I would even kind of wonder about that. But for a private development, I think it's unprecedented. And you made a bad deal, in my judgment, to begin with. Now, now you're kind of justifying that, you've come up with all these terms that nobody understands. I see my time is up.
Thank you.
I would urge you to table this until the public knows what's going on here. Thank you.
Thank you. Eve Bruce?
Good morning, Mayor Coombs, Mayor Potem, Brian Bagley, and city council members. I'm Eve Bruce, I'm the Chair of the Board of Directors of the Longmont Area Chamber of Commerce, and in January of 2013, our President and CEO, Kathy Weber Harding, spoke to the city council in support of the Twin Peaks Mall redevelopment and reimbursement agreement. council in support of the Twin Peaks Mall redevelopment and reimbursement agreement. The completion of this project will create a new and high-energy destination that keeps people shopping and dining in Longmont rather than the current leakage that we have to other communities. The city's partner in this agreement, New Mark Merrill Mountain States, has become a part of Longmont community and has established strong relationships with many local nonprofit groups. New Mark Merrill Mountain States has taken great care in its design efforts to incorporate beautiful gathering areas to be used to build fundraising efforts of local charities, host events that shoppers will enjoy, and to celebrate the accomplishments of everyone in Longmont. The Longmont Area Chamber continues to support this project and requests the city council support this ordinance with financing of $27.5 million with the redevelopment of Twin Peaks Mall. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Marilyn Hughes.
I appreciate the chance to speak this morning. I wasn't able to attend the Tuesday meeting. And I won't bore you with the levels of emotion that I've gone through since Tuesday and understood what the process was. I'm going to say that I spent the last four days going through what I would call City Finance 101 to try to understand better what really was going on. Because I was certain that it wasn't just selling the buildings. However, so there's two things that are coming to my mind that I just want to share. Number one is, I'm really disgusted with myself that I haven't done a better job in keeping track and following up on what's going on in council. The excuse that I use for myself is, it's hard sometimes to understand all the terms, but that's not a good excuse, and I intend to do better at that. I applaud Councilwoman Levinson for bringing up the fact that we need to do a better job making things understandable to the public if we don't want them to feel they are in the dark, and then all of a sudden, this is what's happening. I really would like to urge the council to be a very active participant in the oversight process during the development of the mall. I understand totally from my research in the last four days that there really are no other good choices here than to go ahead with the plan. My gripe is one that Mr. Peck mentioned, why the decision to invest privately from our own funds originally occurred, and many of you were not here when that happened. So Mr. Bagley mentioned, Councilman Bagley mentioned the question, if we don't make the payments, what would happen? And if the mall does not succeed, or does not bring in as much interest as projected, what would happen? And the answer to that is that we pay our debt out of the general fund, which would make me very unhappy. So my personal goal is to make sure I can do everything as a citizen to make the mall work. I've heard a lot of really good detail today. And I've heard Mr. Ginsburg say that he's pledging to do his best to make this work. I'd like to hear a pledge from the council that you all will stay on top of this every minute, every day, that is possible to make sure this mall succeeds. If it succeeds, yes, it looks good on paper. If it doesn't succeed, we owe a lot of money, and my time is up. Thank you.
Thank you, Marilyn. Tom McCoy?
My name is Tom McCoy, 27 Cornell Drive. And I guess I have some real concerns about this whole process. I look down the street from where this mall is located, and I see a failed Walmart, yet we're putting another Walmart into this here as a benefit. The theater, if it's a good idea, the developers probably should have had that in place by now, or at least had pretty much decided that they were going to do this. And I think that we, as a city, mortgaging or selling City Hall is not really an answer to this type of question. I think that we are letting ourselves in for something that eight years down the road, 10 years down the road, if this company goes belly up, who is the other partner to carry the bag, to carry all the baggage? That's us. So I think we need to look at this very carefully, whether we table it or just think about, is this something we should be doing? Thank you.
Thank you. Kay Fissinger?
Kay Fissinger, 2199 Creekside Drive. Last night I had the opportunity to read a communication by Don Colson that was sent to the council and to our local newspapers. And my reaction is, wow, Don, I couldn't have said it better myself. However, council and the public needs to hear several voices. And if I know the way the game is played in most city and town governments, and I do because I've been involved with many of them, the problem with New Mark Merrill is only one of the more egregious of city involvements with developers. And the problem is called transparency, full transparency, early transparency, and investigative reporting by the fourth branch of government. I'm probably more a free marketer than many who speak incessantly about the free market. My message to business is really quite simple. If you want to make money on something, you take the risk. If you can't fund it and make a profit, don't do it. Don't go to government in search of some sort of handout, exemption, or the euphemistic public-private partnership, which is just another name for having taxpayers take the risk along with you, or more frequently, to fatten the bottom line. Let's get back to transparency. City council knew the Twin Peaks game plan all along when they bought into what will inevitably be, I believe, a pagan poke. They knew that there was a need to mortgage very valuable taxpayer-funded, city-owned buildings that provide services to our community. They called it by a different name, one that only the financial industry would understand. But make no mistake, Longmonters, the city plans to mortgage your civic center, your library, your police station and courthouse, and the building across the street from the library. The financial community will break the $27.5 million into pieces and sell those pieces like they would bonds. But these are pieces of something that already exists, not new projects the city wants to create that the citizens will own. And if that isn't enough, the ante was up over time from the original $23 million. When you say you own your home, you know that the bank really owns it until you pay off the mortgage, and you know what happens if you default. You should consider that this 23-year mortgage and the maximum lifespan of viability for a mall is 15 years at best. And with changes rapidly taking place in buyer behavior, this adventure will be lucky if it produces substantial revenue for that long. Public grumbling started as one-by-one announcements. If you can get out of this deal, this obligation with $27.5 million, please do so.
Okay. Strider Benson?
Greetings, Mayor Coombs, city council. Boy, have I been enlightened a lot today. As is often not the case, I have learned a lot from every single person who has spoken tonight. And I will defer back to what Marilyn said, and also Mayor Pro Tem Bagley and others about, how come we didn't have any idea of what the heck is really going on? I've come to 100 council meetings in the last couple of years and had basically no clue about what this particular deal is. And I, so many things, and just go back over what everybody has already said, the mitigation, the obligations and stuff. But when the banksters pull the plug out at the economy again, as we know for certain they will, sometime in the next two to 10 years, and collapse the economy again, who's left holding the bag at that point if we haven't paid off certainly sooner than 23 years? That is a crucial aspect, because where's the money going to come from at that point? And will we have to forfeit the city charter to the bondholders if we don't have any buildings or any facilities left to operate the city? I am really concerned about putting the commons up for sale for a private development. Now, I've heard a lot of mitigation, which makes me feel a little bit safer in how well this may have been worked out. But the public doesn't understand this, they haven't known. I would support what Bob Peck said, and please table this briefly, at least for a month, so the public can have some understanding of what the heck is really going on. Maybe it's a good deal. City manager Menges indicated that perhaps we're saving by this deal $400,000 a year compared to other modes of financing. Yeah, that's decent, but what are we putting up at stake? And what is the developer putting up at stake in case it collapses before we start getting the sales taxes from it? These questions and others that have come up today do need to be answered, and so much has already gone into the works. I think there's been tremendous amount of good work done, but the public does not know it or understand it. We need to table this at least a month and inform the public. I was stunned that the press did not report, I'll close this sentence, did not report Tuesday night's meeting the next morning in the paper. Consequently, few people are here. Had it been done so, we'd have had more public participation today. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so anybody else that has not yet testified on this item either Tuesday night or today that would like to testify, please come forward and state your name and address for the...
Good morning. My name is Karen Benker, address 1919 Andrew Alden Street. I was not planning on coming here to speak, so I have no prepared remarks. But the more I find out about this, the more I feel like I have to speak out. What you're about to do, I believe, is crazy. I've been, I had been working on the mall for a number of years. This is your opportunity to do something fantastic for the city of Longmont. This is vision, this is planning, this is knowing what you want to do, what is good for the citizens of Longmont, okay? When we were going through our charade a couple of years ago about what to do with this property, we were told that this is the most valuable piece of property in the city of Longmont. This isn't a place where you just want to fill up some buildings because they're empty. This is where you have an opportunity to do something fantastic. Who here has gone to Belmar? I know, Mr. Mayor, I took you there a number of years ago to show you what a quality development is. You have to have office space, you have to have people living there, you have to have real entertainment, not just a movie theater. What happened to the vision of our performing arts theater that we've been talking about for years? Wouldn't this be a great place to put it? Mortgaging our city buildings is wrong. If you go forward and you mortgage our City Hall, our library, our Justice Center, I think you guys are just nuts, you're crazy. That's not the way you do development. Excuse me. The development itself is supposed to be paying for its own way. You have a valuable piece of property, figure out how to come up with more revenue to pay what they need. But the thing is, before you hand a blank check to a developer, you have to ask for something in return. Don't you think Whole Foods, if they wanted to come to Longmont, they don't need a subsidy? Don't you think Sam's Club? Sam's Club? One of the largest companies in the United States of America, do they need a subsidy to come to Longmont? I mean, think about this. This is your last chance to make it right. Turn Twin Peaks Mall into something that's wonderful, something that's an asset for the community. Don't destroy this opportunity. What you're building is just another strip mall, but you're going to give it a new name. Make it special, make it extra wonderful for the citizens of Longmont. Do your job. Do your homework. Make it wonderful, make it special, put in, you know, apartments and other living arrangements, homes. Build a neighborhood, make it mixed-use. Talk to the city of Westminster. They're in the exact same position that you guys are, exact. But you know what they did? They took Westminster Mall and the city bought it. They now have a master plan, they now have a developer. Why don't you talk to them? Pick up the phone. Talk to the city of Westminster. Find out, how are you going about doing the development of your dead mall?
Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay, I guess that, is there anybody else that would like to come speak? Please come down and state your name and address for the record.
Hello, I'm Edna Loman. I live at 1314 Grant Street. And I just heard about this this week also. I probably don't pay enough attention to what goes on here, although I have been aware of the issues with the mall and the struggles to find what to do there. But I have to admit, I just was very shocked to hear that we were going to sell, as the newspaper said, public buildings. So I did learn a lot today from Jim Golin about what this really is, but it sounds to me it's like a bond issue with no vote. I mean, I think he said it was like a bond issue, but I think for a bond issue, you generally have a vote and people say whether they'd like to do it or not. But I understand that you've been working on this for a long time, so, and I'm sure the city is wanting to get something out of the tax revenues that could be expected. But the other thing that shocked me is, like, the cops, that, you know, that there's not going to be any other buildings that we can sell. And I'm just remembering that we had a flood, a really big flood this year, and lots of infrastructure needs, and like, what if there's another big flood? Or what if there's another fire? I mean, God forbid, but, or an earthquake. I've heard that Greeley's been having earthquakes from fracking lately. So, you know, I mean, there could be lots of public uses in the future that might be needed for when we could really use the collateral of those buildings. And it doesn't seem to me right to be using that to aid in public development when all you're saving is like half a million a year in financing costs at great risk of not having enough funds for some future thing. So I also am worried about this development. Like, I mean, we already have Viten and Cottage, Sprouts and Lucky's. Like, I don't know that I would go to Whole Foods myself, so I don't know that that's a great addition. And Gold's Gym, I already go to the wonderful City Recreation Center, so I don't know that I would personally ever go to Gold's Gym, and certainly not Sam's Club, because I'm just a single person and I don't need great huge quantities of things. So none of those things sound very appealing to me, but what does sound important to me is public uses, educational things, recreational things. I mean, I haven't, I'm sure you can dream up some other wonderful public uses that we would need, and in particular, if this does go forward, I hope there are some public uses that get built into this development.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that'd like to come forward and speak? Well, just come on down.
Paul Tiger, 452 Dixon. The first part of what she said, this is a bond issue without a vote. I am a taxpayer in this town, I consider that these buildings belong to me in part, and I disagree- I consider that these buildings belong to me in part, and I disagree with what you're about to do or going to try to do, or maybe you won't do it. Maybe you'll hear some reason. I do agree with some of the other speakers that said that this should be tabled until there's more public input. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Hello, I'm Greg Miller, 2143 Sand Dollar Drive, Longmont. Don't much approve of private-public developments like this. It's not the way it's supposed to work. I'm a good capitalist and I think if I have a project that should stand on its own. That being said, it sounds like most of you are already on board with it, so my question, mine's more of a question. I don't know if I'm allowed to ask them. I'm not a council member. But when we are leveraging our buildings and giving whatever amount of money, 50 million over the next 23 years, what do we get? Do we, I understand the cash flow aspect of it. Do we get title? Do we, are we in second position on this mall? Do we have any legal standing if and when, you know, banksters, whomever, the market goes bad again? What's our asset that we're purchasing? Because if I were mortgaging my home that was paid off, buying another asset, I would want title to something, at least second position, because I'm sure somebody else is in first position with this fellow. So that's my question.
Anybody else would like to speak at this time? Well, I guess I need a motion. Yeah, first of all, close the public hearing. There's nobody else that would like to speak. Oh, or excuse me. Unfortunately, you've already spoken, a public hearing on this issue, so you're only allowed to speak one time. So is there anybody else that hasn't spoken yet on the public hearing?
You were not present.
I know, but I listened to the public hearing.
You were not present.
Yes, but I did listen to your testimony and Joan Peck's testimony that was made. And Harold can witness that.
Yes.
So everybody's heard your presentation and I've heard it. I saw the video.
The gentleman's presentation was your president. Presence is important. And actually, it is constant.
Point of order.
Yeah. Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Well, philosophically, I'm opposed to this type of financing for private enterprise. However, the decision was made prior to my being on council that this is the way we're going to do it. And there's an obligation to the city to support this project with a $27.5 million contribution for direct payments as well as additional funds to support the issuance of the debt. And the COP was chosen as a financing mechanism, and in my mind, it's the least, it provides the least harm to the citizens of Longmont, so the decision's already been made to support this $27.5 million. It does result in lower debt payments and without any other sugar day, you come in here and just give the city $27 million, there aren't any other options for us. So I would move that we, I would move ordinance 2014-36 with the condition that staff annually present for council consideration information regarding options for accelerated retirement of the debt with surplus TIF revenue. Revenue considered excess to be set aside in a debt reserve fund to support early retirement of the debt.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved to second. And Councilmember Levinson?
Yes, I'd also like to make a friendly amendment to that motion that outlines that we have a yearly end-of-fiscal-year report on the COP. Given that there is a desire of council to retire this debt quicker, I would like to amend the motion to add a end-of-the-year fiscal report with the bullet points outlined in the recommendation from the grand jury of Clauser County, which are listing the original amount of the COPD, brief description of the project finance, name of trustee, balance remaining, interest costs incurred to date, estimated future interest cost. And then I'll add one more thing about the amount of extra dollars that we would be putting into retiring the debt early on an annual basis.
Okay, that motion has asked for a friendly second. So the person that's seconded, do you want to accept the... Okay. Councilmember Bagley?
Hey, Mayor Coombs. I also, I thought Ms. Hughes had a good idea, too. Just, I'd kind of like, you know, every couple of weeks at city council meetings, just, I'd like to know what the periodic, you know, what's going on with demolition, construction, where we at, openings. But I know that we always ask, what's going on with the mall? And we have meetings and talk, but it would be nice to kind of formalize that process so we weren't always wondering what, I mean, just knowing that it's coming so we don't have to worry about it and we can stay on top of things would be, I know you will, but I think it'd be a good idea for council to know as well. And I guess the, some of the comments, just I guess I wanted to, I wanted to respond to, first, Ms. Fissinger. I never knew, I didn't know what a COP was until actually that was presented by the, Jim Golden, I guess. He's not here, but I heard that term from him for the first time. And so that was during the, how are we going to finance this type, that was during that phase of that discussion. I also, a couple of people have actually mentioned that, well, why don't we table this for a month? Unfortunately, the reality is that there's timelines. If we do want the movie theater, and we do want Whole Foods, and we do want Sam's Club, and we do want Gold's Gym, and we do want all the other people who have signed leases with the property owner, we need to move now, or else it's not going to work, at which point now we've defaulted on our obligation to Newmark Merrill. So that was the thinking, that's what I was thinking as someone mentioned that idea. And the other thing is, I completely concur with all the comments about public uses. You know, I've heard Joan Peck mention, well, why not a library? You know, or, or I guess former councilmember Banker said, well, why not a civic center? Well, the honest answer is because we can't pay for it. So I look at this as an opportunity to have, you know, $50 million that we can use towards those beautiful things, better senior centers, better museums, better libraries, things that we can use out of the general fund to beautify our city. And so that's kind of how I look at this. So I'm going to not only support the motion, but also the friendly amendment.
Councilmember Christensen?
I will be the only person I know who will not support this because of the method of selling city property. I will be the voice for the people who are unhappy about this. My only obligation here, my only responsibility is to represent the people of Longmont and to be accountable to the people of Longmont, and I will be the voice for that. Thank you.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I think we're all representing every resident of Longmont, whether we vote for this or not, Councilmember Christensen. And it's, this is not an easy, easy vote by any stretch of the means. And we've talked about this, as has been mentioned on several occasions, had several meetings on this, plenty of notification, even when we were talking about the telecom ballot measure. It was mentioned about certificates of participation, whether that was the way to go or through a traditional bond issuance. We didn't go through a COP, we went through the traditional bond issuance. Listen to everyone's concern. You know, some people like a smaller theater, some people want a bigger theater, some people don't like Sam, some people want Costco. We can have that argument philosophically, however. As it was men, as it was also mentioned, you know, trying, making the best decisions is what this body, and having the best information that we have, is what we were elected to So I will be voting in support of, you know, the motion and the friendly amendment. But as it was stated, the $27.5 million only gets reimbursed after certain obligations are met correct, demolition, you know, Harold mentioned it earlier. We got emails, some of them very colorful, and some comments. And I, valid concerns from residents and some in support. So it's just not that we're, you know, that me voting yes is just waving you off. I've listened to every single one of you. But trying to figure out from a mall that went from $2 million to one that is now generating $200,000, is this an opportunity? Yes. Councilmember Banker was on council when I was, former councilmember Banker was on council when we were discussing blight. This relieves blight. This will, I hope rejuvenate an area and make it a destination location. Whether you like it or not, I understand. We have the best information that we have, and sometimes calculated, calculated risks are necessary.
Councilmember Penlon?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. There comes a time when you have to invest in your infrastructure. This project mitigates blight. This area is blighted. And any great, any great project is a partnership. Previous councils have been unable to make this partnership to mitigate this blight, and, and, and we found a good partner, I believe, in Newmark Merrill. Not only does this one get rid of blight, it generates income for the city. This is income we would not have otherwise. If we were to build a library, it would not generate income. This project generates income for our city that allows us to do those things that we want to do in the future. Not just, you know, support retail, but also help with our flood mitigation, to help build new infrastructure for the city itself. It's, it's a win-win. It's a win-win partnership. And I, too, have listened to the citizens and I understand you're just, you know, that you perhaps haven't felt like you've had enough information. And I apologize for that. We should be better at providing you that information. But the fact is, this is a good deal. It saves us money in financing. We get an income generating project, and I will be supporting it.
City Attorney?
Here in council, Eugene May, City Attorney. Before council votes on this motion, if we could have it read back, we're just conferring with the finance team. We have potential concerns about the impact on the RRA and the financing mechanism. We want to make sure we understand the motion, and we may need to take a moment for conferral among staff to make sure that we're not impairing the rights under the financing mechanism or the RRA negatively.
Okay. Go ahead, Sarah. Do you want to try a...
Actually, Mayor, I think I'm going to defer to Councilmember Moore to repeat his
So the motion that I made was, I move ordinance 2014-36 with the condition that staff annually present for council consideration information regarding options for accelerated retirement of the debt with the surplus TIF revenue. Revenue considered excess to be set aside in a debt reserve fund to support the early retirement of the debt.
And then the friendly amendment that... Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. And one other thing that was mentioned is that perhaps apartments and things can go there. If I'm not mistaken, housing does not generate TIF. Am I correct?
You get property tax, too.
Property tax, but not, but does not generate sales tax. So just for clarification. So, you know...
Also, there was another question, if I can answer that, in terms of the reimbursement process. And so obviously, state law regulates what can and cannot be reimbursed. And so as those requests for reimbursements come in, they have to be vetted by staff to make sure they comply with all relevant laws related to this. In addition, in terms of reimbursement for land acquisition, Section 2.3 talks about that. And it says upon commencement of construction, you can be, there can be reimbursement for 50% of the land. And then upon completion of construction of eligible public improvements listed in paragraph 2A, and 2A2 of Exhibit D, and completion and construction of 75% of the village, the developer shall be eligible to receive reimbursement for the additional 25%. And then finally, upon substantial completion of construction of the private improvements defined as natural grocery stores and substantial completion of a construction of 100% of the remaining private improvements, the developer will be able to receive reimbursement for the remaining percentage, although we will withhold the warranty holdback amounts for the public improvements that are made in the process. So in addition to the compliance of state law, just in terms of the land reimbursement, that is phased out over the project to make sure that there is a completion of that.
City Attorney?
Mayor, if we could have Jim Neer come up, we wanted to ask some questions about clarifying that motion.
And can I... Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd actually, I'd like to add an additional friendly amendment, just, and this might go towards it. And so just add the phrase, to the extent that it does not negatively impact the city's contractual, financial, and/or legal obligations it has entered into, comma, then whatever you said. Just to be clear, so that in the event that...
If I may, I'm Jim Neer with First Southwest, the city's financial advisor on this issue and other capital financing programs. And I am simply inquiring about the intent of the motion with respect and differentiating between a request for reporting from the staff on the performance of the revenue stream under the RRA as opposed to a commitment to capture that, any surplus money, and hold it specifically for prepayment of the COPs. It wasn't clear to me whether the motion was simply asking for regular reporting and updates, or whether it was actually asking, or making a commitment of those revenues toward prepaying the COPs.
Well, I don't think, you know, my view is, I don't think we want to tie our hands exactly. I mean, that's just an option that we could decide to do. Doesn't mean that we necessarily want to, because we vote on this amendment with, that we're pledging absolutely to pay back revenues, because basically paying back revenues is a decision you make based on what the interest rate environment is. If interest rates are really, really high, and you could do better investing that money in a better or interest rate-bearing situation, why would you want to pay off debt early when you can make, invest that in other ways? I mean, that's, you know, I kind of hate to tie our hands pledging that we're absolutely going to pay down debt when there could be something in the future that we're not foreseeing. That's my only concern. Councilmember Levinson?
Thank you. I think that the intention of the motion is, as I interpret it, is that there would be an annual review, and we would look at the additional revenue above and beyond the increment and make a decision on an annual basis. And I really believe that that was the intent and how I understand what we're voting on. And I think that that really dovetails well into reporting annually to the public, the state of the COP, continuing to assert the use, how, where we are at paying off the buildings. And I think that at that point, giving council the flexibility to, say, for example, we're within $50,000 one year of paying off the development center. I think future council would relish the possibility of being guided by this motion to say, any additional revenue coming from the mall above and beyond the increment, we should seriously look at retiring the debt, getting back these buildings as quickly as possible... Getting back these buildings as quickly as possible with that minimum of 10 years, I think we've heard from the public that this, getting those assets back in our hands and titled is important.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. And that's what I got from the motion, beyond, you know, with the 10-year minimum, that, you know, right, before 10 years is not possible, but after the 10 years, if it's possible, if it's possible to do that, that we should look at it and potentially, any member, whoever's sitting at this dais at that time can.
Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Yeah, that is, the intent is not to commit to actually sending that money into a reserve account if the city needs it for other purposes. I don't know if the language is that clear, but I would also consider Councilman Bagley's...
You don't need it with that.
What's that? You don't need it? Okay. So I mean, I think the intent was to make sure we're reviewing it, and anything that we consider excess, that's the way, you know, I mean, after we balance our budget, after we deal with immediate issues or things that we, that are important to the community, that we need to fund, if there's, if there's a piece of that revenue left, we should be setting it aside to retire the debt. And that was the intent of the motion.
Okay. Yeah. Does that work?
Mayor and Council, thank you for that clarification. I think the financial team is satisfied on the intent of the motion.
Okay. Okay, that's, instead, let's, let's vote. Okay, that passes six to one with Councilmember Christensen descending. Okay, so now we're off to the consent agenda.
Mayor, the only item on your consent agenda this, this morning is Resolution R. 2014-61, a resolution authorizing the execution and delivery of a pledge agreement with the Twin Peaks Metropolitan District. And of course, staff is available to answer questions, should you have them.
Councilmember Penley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I would move Resolution 2014-61.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second, and let's vote. Okay, that passes seven to zero. Okay, I guess since we've already had final call, public invited to be heard, well, I guess since people are here, if there's anybody like to speak at final call, public invited to be heard at this point, I'll allow that. Anybody? Okay, I'll, I'll close.
Yes, Strider Benstone, 951 Seventeenth Avenue. I thought some other people would be speaking. I'm stunned they were not given a chance, given the fact the presentation took place after their brief remarks four days ago. But anyway, it seems like this whole thing has been a fait accompli, rather foisted on the public. I do appreciate the depth of information and mitigatory action that apparently has been taken in the information today. But I am stunned that the public was not more involved in this process all along. And I would like to reaffirm what Karen Banker, a former councilmember, indicated. When, when it first came up six years ago, we were envisioning a large performing arts center, mixed residential office, a shuttle to downtown. We finally got approval of the fast track station without fast tracks, but the station hasn't even started. We were going to have Riverwalk Development. What happened to that? Well, a lot of that was, of course, the, the banksters' collapse of the economy. They stole about $20 trillion out of the economy, and everybody else is left scrapping over what do we do now? They will do it again, because Dodd-Frank got weakened so much before it ever got passed, and then it's not funded. So you know for certain that they're going to do it again. We just don't know when or how big. It'll probably be bigger and worse than last time. So where's the city going to be? Who's left holding the bag if this gets half done or not paid off? And I agree with Councilmember Levinson's point that we need at least an annual report and an update as to what's happening. But we've got a whole lot of vacuum here that we need to figure out how to deal with, given the fact that our finances are strained. And maybe it's a good idea how you guys worked it out, but you did not let the public know to where we could understand what was happening. And, and I think it puts us, the city as a whole, in major jeopardy, given the fact that essential public facilities are mortaged now. So whatever we do in the near future, keep that in mind and see if there is after the fact mitigation, and keep us informed as to what's happening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kay Fissinger, 2199 Creekside Drive. I want to thank you, Councilmember Christensen, for taking a position of no vote and represent, generally speaking, the people who are not in favor of what, of the public-private partnership and the city's investment in this, to begin with. I very, very much appreciate that. I want to thank you, Councilmember Moore, for stating your concerns about public, public private partnerships. And I would like to see this council be far more transparent about future partnerships with developers, regardless of what they're developing. We're not here to serve developers, we're here to serve the citizens of Longmont. And I'd like to ask our city manager to reinstitute in the packet, the first of the month, or last of the month, for the coming month, an indication of what kinds of, what subjects are going to be brought before the city council during that month. We had that for a period of time on Gordon Pedro, the city manager, and somewhere along the line, it disappeared. I really think the public needs to get more notice of what's coming before it, rather than just when the packet is released, because, let's face it, guys, by the time it gets to you, most of the stuff is already a done deal. And so the public needs more warning if there's an issue that they really are concerned about, so that they can begin to research, ask questions, then, not when it's too late. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to come to final call, public invited to be heard?
I'm Alan Ginsborg, and I live in Fort Collins right now. I want to, again, affirm all the effort, all the study that all of you, your staff, members of your community have done. It's good to see the passion your community has for things like this. I think it's very important to do this, to have this vetting. There have been many, many, many people who have come to me to say how excited and enthusiastic they are about this project. We intend to not only have a successful project, but we are part of your community. My partner Sandy and I are making the enormous commitment to your community personally. And we're looking forward to a decades-long relationship together where we help this community become more and more what it desires to be. You've all taken a great step toward us accomplishing this vision together. We'll soon have a groundbreaking, official groundbreaking event, even though we've begun work on the demolition already. And we look forward to sharing that with you and your community, and then sharing a grand opening and a celebration. So we have a lot to look forward to here. It's been a journey. Nothing worthwhile comes easy, and you have all taken a great step to bring this into a reality. So Sandy, my partner and I, both thank you very much, and you will not be disappointed that you have my commitment.
Thank you.
It's never happened in 32 years. We will not fail this time. Thank you all, though. I appreciate it.
Thank you. So I guess now it's time for mayor and council comments. I would like to basically start out and thank, you know, the council for running the meeting without me on Tuesday. You know, unfortunately, you can't see, you know, five minutes ahead what's, issues were coming on city council, we don't have that visibility. And, you know, health and wellness has always been a hot button, and I was, you know, a speaker at this conference that I went to, and, you know, prepaid and had flights. And so again, thank you for running the meeting, and, you know, I'd like to thank my council for, you know, that causing this extra. But maybe this was good because it brought out some different points of view and some different testimonies that wouldn't have happened had I not been available. So again, thanks. You know, this was really a tough issue. I was kind of surprised myself that it, that people were blindsided by it, because I, yeah, I just don't underst, for whatever reason, you know, just because it was crystal clear to me. And, you know, to me, it was a hard decision, you know, from the beginning, but we walked through every phase of the steps where we looked at different finance options. Obviously, it made sense as a businessperson to pick the lowest finance option with the least amount of risk, because debt payment amount is, you know, based on your interest rate, and, you know, the amount of money you got to set aside. So I was on board with the COP process, you know, from the get-go. And, you know, when the analysis of the income stream, and I thought it was pretty conservative, and I thought David Starms did an excellent job on that, even based on the latest mix of what we know about the mall, I thought the risk was pretty low. So, you know, I'd like to thank the staff for the hard work they've done on this. And, you know, to me, you know, there's a lot of emotion about this. I tried to separate my emotion and just make the best decision possible. I thought I did that. I think I represent the citizens of Longmont. I still believe that, you know, 55, 60% of the citizens want the mall. I know there's a lot of people that don't, but because I think I'm trying to stand for the majority of the citizens of Longmont, no matter, you know, which side of the aisle they're on, I thought, you know, I did my job the best that I know how to do. So that's all I can do is do the best I can. Not everybody's going to be happy with me oftentimes, but that's just the way it is. So, anyway, anybody else like to speak? Okay, I guess I'll close. Mayor and council comments at this point. City Attorney, any comments? All right. This meeting is adjourned.